Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet, you can find almost everything from the smallest penknife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everybody. We're trying to make this as short as we can, although it's nice and cool in here. We don't have minutes with us today. Park County has minutes today, so we're going to table those. So I make a motion we table the June 20th minutes until next meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Payroll amount of $194,061.68. Now that number there is different than I had on my sheet.
Yeah, it's not matching.
That's because at the back of this, you have another one.
Ah, okay.
You have a $333 plus $193.72.68. So you have two of them.
I've got a motion to approve payroll, the amount of $194,061.68.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay. And we have received payroll claims accounts payroll report, the amount of $77,743.25.
Yeah, I make a motion, we acknowledge your receipt of the payroll claims, the amount of $77,743.25. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, then we have claims, the amount of $657,683.17.
The fifth?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, who was the first?
Yes, yeah.
You had time to look at claims first?
I have, I'm ready for it.
I make a motion we approve claims, the amount of $657,683.17. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a request for hand type check.
Okay, on this one, Jim, Don Crooner for the elevator has a contract to approve and then a hand type check. Here's what Don has gave me.
He has a regular contract for it.
And if we pay the elevator contract now before that certain date?
Yep.
We get a discount.
Yeah, I think we save $300, I think by doing it before the end of the month. The amount for the contract is $333.52. That's just a slight increase, a three percent increase. So the total amount of the contract then is $3,799.33. So I make a motion that we approve the contract with, I don't know the name of the company. Min America Elevator, the amount of $3,799.73.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Well, it says county auditor on there to sign it. I'll sign it too. There's a place where you sign it, the two floor.
Well...
Says auditor on there. I just signed the bottom, something kind of private, have you but he's...
Because he doesn't really have a physical contract for it here to be signed.
It's just accepted the cost of what it was. It's the same contract.
It's a contract price. A lot of contract prices, so all is good.
Okay. All right. I have some new business here. Let me see what I got before we get into the other.
Okay, the lady for Main Street was not able to make it today.
Okay.
What they are doing is that they're having games for kids on that date that I've got in.
July 30th. It's a date that's written down here.
And it's into July here. So they want to use the courthouse lawn for games for kids. They're going to have food vendors come up and set up. They're going to have a live band. And it's just a family, trying to get families out together and have an event.
Set up on the square?
Yes, on the courthouse.
And the tents, the only concern always is with the new sprinkler system, which people aren't used to having a sprinkler system. If they're going to do tents, if they're going to put any tie down stakes, I mean, they just need to clear it with Don before they do that about where they put stuff?
Yep.
Other than that, I don't have a problem. You guys have any question on that? No?
It's the 30th, or it's a Saturday?
Yes.
They're motion to approve it?
We let Main Street obviously do other things as well. If somebody had a problem with the problem, a motion that we give Main Street to try for permission to use the courthouse lawn on Saturday, July 30th, for their block party. And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ryan, I'm going to skip over you for a minute because you're going to take a little longer. Let me get these other guys out of the way.
Absolutely.
Because I knew your final sticking around anyway, so. Got Chris O'Brien here, some things for us to approve. Chris is our emergency management director.
So there's three things. The first is the bids for the generator for the highway department. There's three bids in there. I'm going to recommend we go with the Hobson Electric one, even though it's more expensive, and that's because you get a Kohler generator in the highway department. It would keep the fleet that we have all Kohler, and it would fall under the Buckeye contract we have.
And what's the amount on that?
It's $14,800. And this is under that grant that we have.
Right.
I will probably come to you in a little bit later, hopefully sooner than later, about the fairgrounds one. And I'm looking at using the bid that I got from Ali Electric to do the fairgrounds one.
Okay. Is that to provide power to the community building or to the offices? Where's that going to go?
That's more to the community building and less to the offices. It's more of a, the park grounds can be, you know, can help us out if we needed a shelter for emergency stuff.
Yes.
And we put a generator in there and it's a lot of benefits. So my focus was not on the extension office.
I agree a hundred percent. In my 20 years, we've only had to open that up a couple of times for a shelter to go to in blizzards and storms, so it's good to have that access. I'd go ahead and make a motion and then we approve the purchase of a generator system for the highway department from Hobson Electric, the amount of $14,800, as recommended by the emergency management director.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, you might make note in the minutes too on that motion that it is coming from a grant. It is a grant money. All right, what else you got?
The next thing is the hazardous mitigation plans. The county received was awarded a grant to about $18,000 to write a hazardous mitigation plan. I'm going to recommend that we work with Partnership Park County to actually do the actual writing of the plan. I've talked to Cindy about this, and this is what Amy and her did in 2016. So I'd like to do that same thing. So I have in there, I have a contract. And it basically, the $18,457 would go to them. They would assist with writing the plan.
You would go with Partnership Park County?
They would go to Partnership Park County. They would assist write the plan, and then we would write that.
What the hazardous, the hazard mitigation plan is, mitigation is making things easier. If we have a major problem, how do we handle that problem?
I know, it's identifying hazards that the county has, flooding tornadoes, and figuring out ways to mitigate the hazards, not really respond.
Oh, I thought was responding, okay.
It's, yeah, and it's all theme of terminology, but it's more mitigating it, like...
Lessening the risk?
Yeah.
Okay. Did not know that. Is that grant money also then?
That is grant money, yes.
Is there a motion to approve that?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve contract with Partnership Park County to do the hazardous mitigation study. I'll second that.
Do a second to approve the hazardous mitigation policy to use the grant money of $18,457, give that to Park County Incorporated, and they will work with the emergency management to produce this plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, what else?
The next is, there's six letters, one to each incorporated towns. That is telling them that we're doing the hazardous mitigation plan and asking them to be part of the multi judiciary planning effort. I'm going to go to each one of the meetings, three of them tonight, and explain what we're doing. Ask them to provide a name from the different incorporated towns to be on the planning committee. And that allows us to meet the requirements for the plan, to make sure we have enough public involvement. It's one of the requirements.
What do you need from us to do for that?
I just need you to know the letter, and the letter's there. I put your name on it. And so if you just sign those, there's six of them, one for each.
Or here's the ones that we saw.
Okay, here we go. All right, I'd make, well, someone should make a motion, I guess, to authorize me to sign this letter on behalf of emergency management to go to the towns and request them that they participate in the hazard mitigation plan.
I'll make that motion, and I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Just the one place or something?
I know, well, there's one more six on this one.
Every single letter.
I didn't have a copy, man.
No carpet paper anymore, or else?
Give me a piece of aluminum here. All right.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Later on the first, can I get a copy of what he signed?
Yep, I will scan it to you right now.
That'd be great.
All right, thanks a lot.
Yep, thank you. And we have a, just letting us know about the wastewater treatment permit. Okay, sheriff grant? Do you have a grant request or something from us?
Yeah. It's a bulletproof vest grant. It's a...
$7,645.
Yeah, I think that's what, yeah.
Moveover Outfitters Incorporated?
Oh, no.
A different grant. Justin, I got one just once.
Oh, the USDA. USDA, that's for the vehicle, the Tahoe, USDA vehicle grant. So that's for lease, the final monies.
That's the $7,645.
Yeah.
And this is one I need to sign.
So Jim needs this one out of court. I'll get this to you now, we'll bring it out of this one.
Okay. And that's all I thought you was talking about?
Yeah, we can get you right now. Or do you want to go back to these other two guys we got?
So Justin, do you have a copy of that one there that just lay down for our office?
We didn't need to watch this one, did we?
No, it's already written, because it's final money. Yeah, the final money.
Another news one.
Yeah, so then we've got different grants.
Yeah.
There's the contract, Jim. If you like your, there you go. That's the one he just was talking about for the jackets.
Request here. And again, the reason we approved, it was the same amount of money though, that's the same thing.
Yeah, it's the exact same one.
Yep. Is it just, because it's just for bulletproof vests? So that same amount of money, really?
$7,000, $74 or something.
Oh, they're...
Oh, it's a 50%.
$76.45.
Yeah, that's what, it's, yeah, close to the same amount. It's just a...
I got you, okay.
Reimbursement, 50%.
Requesting $7,684.26. This is the one for the bulletproof vests.
We'll find that out for firearms, and then they'll, we'll put their reimbursement back into it.
Okay. So what we have then is a request from sheriff's office to locate and seek me a grant to reimburse them for their purchase of bulletproof vests, the amount of $7,684.26. I make the motion we approve that grant request?
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And again, the only reason we have to approve the grants is required by the state just to make sure that we're not going after more than one grant, one same place. So it's not to oversee your, routine your, while you're doing stuff. It's just to make sure that we have the grants. We're aware of what grants are being sold in county. Okay. Then we have that wastewater permit, and then we have Rockville Lake campground. I don't see Chris here.
Yeah, he brought this in this morning.
Oh, is he?
He's got it out there.
Okay.
Just to let you know, and I just put this in your folder to let you know that there's a violation going on.
Okay.
So you're aware of it, and I assume he's probably taken care of it.
Is he, is Chris here?
No, just Brian, yes, sir.
Oh, just Brian, okay.
It's... Oh, Allen, Allen. One team, I think.
Okay. So is there anything else from the link that we need?
Just that they had an accident over the weekend, and a tree fell on a car that was hit.
Okay.
We just got that, she just sent that.
Okay, oh, okay. I haven't seen it, I haven't had a chance to give you the mail.
Tree fell on a car, we didn't get it out there, so.
Got you, okay.
But he just wanted to be sure, so.
Okay. Matt Steckley. As you know, Matt, we hired Matt Steckley to seek some proposals to deal with the siding issue out of the jail, and he's been working on that. But like many other, we were just talking about that, many other entities seeking people to do work. You're not getting any grants, so tell us where we are, what we got.
Yes, sir, full update. So regarding the jail heating units, both the domestic as well as the furnaces, we're still looking at an August, September install date. The fire enunciator at the courthouse, I just signed off on as built or preliminary drawings that will be or ask built upon completion. We're looking into right now, do we need downstate release for those drawings for the courthouse and fire enunciator? Flush valves are fully installed for the jail, that, I'm just waiting on an install date. So that bundle, that bundle of four projects is all in progress and moving. Definitely anticipate all four being done by August, September. The JL exterior, so I wanted to come for you guys. I, per Commissioner Cullen, Newcore Steel, been in extensive contact with them, including their senior rep. You have to be a registered contractor with them to source their materials. So I don't remember the last, when we approved that contract to solicit quotes for the JL exterior, but it was quite a while back, and that was a pretty big waste of time. And so I'm here today to say we're going a different direction. Newcore sent it out statewide, and basically I put the specs that I had together and emailed what it was, and Newcore and I discussed it in detail, all the way down to the exact trim package. He sent that out and got absolutely zero replies. Not one in the entire state was interested. So I've exhausted that, and if you remember, I discussed that if we were to go with an architect, like that one architect tried, I think it was like $60,000, $70,000 for drawings when we're simply cladding it, right? So I don't, I agree with you guys, I'm not going that route at all. So I basically want to get your permission to open this up, both to advertise it publicly, and then for me to really put the word out to contractors on my own, doing due diligence on them, background, you know, are they capable of it? Obviously to make sure we have responsible, competent contractors. But I just want to fully open it up without detailed specs. They have enough information to bid accurately on the backend once quotes are received. That's where I'll really come in, because we don't, normally 90, 95% of my bid packages, they are really detailed spec bid packages, or on this, we're going a little gray. Now normally, you know, if you did a contract with me, everything's super gray, which is why counties, all of the state have these big variances. We're going to go gray on this one. It's the right way to do it. I'm just really going to pick it up on the backend of really getting into those quotes to look for variances, or they're not exactly apples to apples and adjust. But definitely, time to get going on that. I did finalize, at least to get an answer, that that exterior facade does have to come off. That pretty much no one in the metal industry is going to warranty that with that exterior sitting under it. So it will be a full tear off of that, and then we...
That's kind of how we thought it would go on that.
Yeah, I know, there was the question, could we go that way?
So Newcore mature wouldn't be enough?
So where Newcore is at is, he said, but yes, so we're opening up now to other distributors, manufacturers of metal paneling. Newcore said, once you go out to bid, any contractors you get, my goal is four to five, with a final of three solid quotes, but I'm looking to get four or five on the tours, four or five interested that'll say they'll submit. But Newcore pretty much said, we'll get, if you get anyone, you know, we'll get them in our system if they want procure from us. So they'll have to jump through some, you know, registration hurdles, but...
That's the way you do it, okay.
Yeah, so anyways, I don't like delays. If I'm on something, it's moving, and this is just, we met two, three months ago, and I'm sitting here empty handed, and not cool, not cool. So we're going to get cranking on that. I just wanted to let you know that's kind of the direction we're going to go due to the circumstances that I've encountered.
I appreciate that. I want you to know, I mean, I've had confidence from Matt all along. Of course, we've never seen the finished products. We'll find, we'll have a final judgment. The amount of other four projects are done, two in this one. But my experience with Matt has always been that, as a professional as can be, he called one, and if he had to come explain that to us, and he explained it to me on the phone. And I said, I'll leave that up to you. If you want to make sure that these guys, if they have any questions, you can answer those. If you had any questions, and here he is, he had a long drive on a hot day. So I appreciate you coming down and telling us that. Sorry you're having a tough time with that, but...
No, no, no worries.
That's why I hired you, instead of us having to do that. We're glad you're doing that, so that's a good thing.
So this is kind of funny, you know, my bid package, even for smaller projects, it's pretty extensive. I mean, a lot of contractors look at my bid package, and I tell them, like, read every page. I know it's 30, 40 pages. They're not off the shelf. They're customized, and every single page has something that's pertinent to that project. So your seven Resner furnaces for the jail. So the awarded contractor, HFI, came back to me and said, you know, Matt, we quoted that in November. Well, it was just awarded, what was it, May, June, and there were price increases. And so I said, yeah, that's fine. Per my bid package, per the scope of work and the obligations that you have to submit, I don't take anyone's word for it. If you're working with me, you have to submit a letter with the actual pricing from where you source it from, which in the HVAC industry is like hard, you know, very tightly guarded in terms of numbers. So you want your change order, you have no choice. So I got it, and I got it here for you guys to review. The from their manufacturer on their letterhead, this is what it was in November, this is what it is now, and then the overall change order from HFI. So literally just a layer of protection that they're not telling me, and I'm coming to you.
How much change?
You're going to work with me, you have to prove it. Total for the seven Resners, and I think there was 1,500 extra on the shipping side, only on that side. But total is $18,785.41.
What was the total amount to begin with?
I don't have that. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared with the original, but... Yeah, you're not, if you're on a job with me, you're not saying change order without really justifying it. So I don't want this to be public, because it is kind of guarded in terms of what actual materials cost, but for you guys as a board, this was literally the, I believe, the November, and they actually itemized it. And then versus the, okay, here's the two totals. This was November.
Okay.
This was, so anyways, it is fully legit. So I just need a signature on that for HFI to approve, but...
We'll have to approve the change order then too, if we're going to do...
Just the change order.
Yeah.
That first page is all I need. All the rest of that is for you guys. But yeah, just another layer of protection that if you're going to request additional funds on a project on mine, you have to justify it whether...
Justin, you got any questions on that?
No.
And it's not unreasonable that the first cost was about $70,000, so it's about a...
68 to 83 is basically, I believe, what it did.
Yeah, so $18,000 up, 20% increase.
Yeah, it does align with other projects on mine in terms of boilers and...
Pay this out of...
This is the art money that council already approved, expenditure for.
To do it. Yeah, but do we have the extra?
Yeah.
Still in that, we have money, okay.
Yep. In fact, we were going to have an art meeting, but Cindy's father-in-law passed away. Yeah, father-in-law passed away last night. Do you want to do some numbers in there, can we see? Don't say that we have much choice on it. It looks like it is legitimate, I think, if you said...
Fully, yeah, fully legit.
That's the manufacturer, it's not a mayhem number. This is what the actual cost of material is going to be in terms of difference.
And regarding, I've done other work for you guys over the past couple of years, three hour garden project work. You'll be seeing a lot, the courthouse and jail will be seeing a lot more of me once we get September, August. I'll definitely have a good presence there, make sure everything really is installed right and turns out correct. The contractors know, one already tried for the courthouse fire enunciator to release an invoice, and they know all correspondence invoices goes through me, and that you're, I don't care what you're requesting, that project's not started, so...
Well, that's exactly why I brought you in, because I had confidence, just for a conversation, of course. I didn't know anything, but I have confidence, and from what I've seen, I have, I expect you to be there. Do those, I don't, like, it's, I just expect you to be there. I know you're on it, that's why I mean why I expect it. It's not going to be a surprise for me that you show up and do that. I fully expect you to do those kind of things.
Correct, but I'm just saying, even from the payoff side, that I will, the contractors, the agreement is, the way it's going to work, I will forward their invoices onto the auditor. That's officially, I expected it, it's right, go ahead and pay them. So any invoices for any of these projects, any corresponds, the contractors know you're not going to hold of anyone at the county. And but if, just to let you know, once we get closer here, we'll probably be talking quite a bit on legit, what's paid, what's not, so, and there's four projects plus the jail. So yeah, we'll definitely be corresponding more as time proceeds here.
Okay.
So how many projects do we have altogether?
So there's four, right, there's four right now. The jail domestic boilers, the jail furnaces.
Flush valves.
The flush valves, and then the courthouse fire enunciator. And all those are going to hit quick, first being the flush valves. That's in stock, we're ready to go. I'm just waiting on an install. And all those are gonna hit quick, first being the flush valves, that's in stock, we're ready to go, I'm just waiting on an install date.
And the fifth one is the one he's currently working on, which is the exterior of the jail.
But the four approved, procurement's already taken place, the jail exterior is still early, so.
Okay, let's vote on this, um, change order.
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the change order in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-one cents on the resonator furnace replacements for the jail.
All fair and say aye. Is there a place to be assigned in?
Initial anywhere from, just the front page, yup, just sign initial, doesn't matter.
And then Matt later on, can you give me a copy of that and sign?
Yes, absolutely, I will, um, I, any counties where I've got multiple, Martin County is another one, I got quite a few, kind of like you guys, quite a few moving parts. So, um, I put together a really nice document for the auditor and I'll do the same for you guys to really track. So it's not gonna be on you to see what, I'll fully keep you updated, this has been paid, this is what's owed and I'll be proactive about it, make your guys' world easier.
I'd just like to have everything that the commissioner signed into, into our folder, so we can refer.
Yeah, cor- correct. All right, well, thank you so much, we'll be in touch, all right.
Do you need him to make a copy of that now or just have him send you one?
I mean, there's a, I could make this from.
Yeah, just make it.
It should be out now, yup.
That'd be great.
Yes.
All right, um, and next we have Ryan Keller from Thrive. We had last time, uh, the numbers to approve for the, um, our contribution to Thrive West Central. And Ryan wanted me to explain some of the goings on with that, so he couldn't come then, so he's here today. Ryan is the executive director of what used to be West Central Economic Development District. Today it's Thrive West Central.
That's right. Rolls off the tongue.
So I have two documents in front of you. The first one was the Park County twenty twenty-one annual report. And then the second one is the funding request for the calendar year twenty-three. We can start with the twenty twenty-one annual report, but that's something that I started up in with the organization now, going on three years. So that's something that I started a couple of years ago, um, to really kind of show and illustrate, uh, really what you're getting for your, your contribution, um, for matching grants. So there's three areas typically that you're, you're providing a matching grant on. One, it's, uh, with our designation as the Economic Development District to, uh, to provide a seventy thousand dollars is what we, we have traditionally got in the past, um, for that. So there's a, a county matched that belongs to the Economic Development District. The second is for our Older Americans Act grant dollars from the federal government. Uh, there's a match portion with that. And then third is, um, a state grant through NDOT that gives us the designation as a rural planning organization, um, to do asset collection and, um, asset, uh, asset planning for NDOT and, and different federal highway grants in with that. So the annual report gives a good summary and it kind of shows and outlines, uh, really all the activity that we're doing, not only for the region, but then also for Park County.
What, excuse me for interrupting you here, but what's really important on this? Well, I first, uh, I'm currently the, the board president of Thrive West Central. I had Ron Maine come to us before, Ron was, not Ron Maine, Ron, uh.
Ensign Camp.
Yeah, Ensign Camp, he came to us, he came to the council. Because for years and years, we had paid these fees, but we really didn't know what we were getting for them. The council began to be concerned about what were we getting, rightfully so, what were we getting for the money that, uh, spent? And so he came to explain and there was no doubt then that we were getting more, vastly more benefit than the dollars we were paying. So if you look at that report that he gave you there, just, just not told you up too long, just, it shows the numbers of the services that we're getting between the area agency on aging and the, um, caregiver plans, the transportation funding. So for our expenditure, nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars, that's, uh, that's our investment. We're getting benefits in excess of seven hundred thousand dollars worth of, with the benefits out of that, so. When the council saw that, that's where we're, it was kind of no doubt we're getting plenty of bang, plenty of bang for our dollars. So that's where we've continued down, down this road. We are getting increased participation. If you've seen the Thrive bus on the road in the county, that is transportation, rural transportation, we're still working on that as well. So that will be even enhanced as we go along. We hope to get to a point where it's just pretty much an on-call, you call and you need a ride someplace, we'll have response for that. Maybe it will be the point, we'll have a, a bus of our own in the county, we'll have immediate response or at least really short-term, um, response to that need for, for rides. So all that's coming up and of course, the, uh, agency for aging, the agency needs that we have, uh, in Park County, we're, we're just getting over, that's all it is. And these are, these are big, big deal items here for a lot of folks who can't afford any other option. So it's a great service to provide. So any questions for him on the, on the report, what we're getting, the money that we paid? Okay, what else?
Excellent, uh, second document is the calendar twenty-three funding request. So, um, we're currently in the, the twenty-two calendar year, so, um, during COVID, uh, the federal government suspended a lot of the grant matching funds, um, on the federal level. So in twenty-one, your contribution was nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. For twenty-three, now they've reinstituted those matching request, grant requests in that. And so there will be, it'd be a total that we're asking for twenty-three is nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight and seventy-six dollars. The only increase you see in that that's new is thirty-five hundred dollars. And that has to do with the expansion of the bus service and the, the, the different, um, uh, aging programs that go around that is to be able to expand, uh, more aging rural transportation into Park County. We have an opportunity that's in front of us. We're still working out the, the details with NDOT, but to expand the, the rural, the aging transportation programs, more so, uh, here into Park County and, and Vermillion and Clay and Sullivan, where right now, everything's currently only operated out of Vigo County. And it's been like that since the inception of the program. But to me, I'd rather be able to have each of the counties have their own rural transportation program and funding because then it goes to a fifty-fifty match versus, um, you know, versus right now, everything kind of coming out of, um, Vigo County. So you're able to get some additional funds that way. That thirty-five hundred dollars equates out to, um, about a one percent, just a hair over a one percent contribution for the overall total, um, cost of operating the program. We offset the other forty-nine percent right now with our other funding sources through the Older Americans Act and other aging programs and dollars. So, um, I, I think it's a, it's a step in the, in the right direction for being able to have a more on-demand transit service here for your residents. But it does come at a, at a cost here and that's the minimum entry point right now is thirty-five hundred dollars.
Sure.
You guys have any questions? So the total amount, now, there was a, there was an increase that was put in over three-year period?
That, so that's for your, um, asset collection on traffic counts with the CERT program for NDOT. And that's a different pot of funding from NDOT versus, these are what, you know, the rural transportation grant is what they call the fifty-three eleven program. The aging programs are your fifty-three ten funding. And then your traffic counting and asset collection is what they call your CERT program. Small, um, your small urban and rural transportation planning funds. But each three are separate pots of funding, um, for separate, separate activities.
Okay, so our total increase is eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars this year compared to last year.
Yeah.
Yup.
And most of that increase is just the reinstatement of those matching funds that were.
That were taken out, yeah.
So.
They had been taken out, we, we only be having thirty-five hundred dollar actual increase.
That's right, but it was one of those things that was the right thing to do for our counties. If we got a break as the organization, we wanted to pass that along, do you remember?
I understand. Any questions or motion to approve? Thoughts?
Just getting my son in my head here.
It's a lot of information.
Well, I mean, I worked for government for a long time, so I know what a bureaucracy it is. But you get to the federal level, it's real bureaucracy, like you said, you got this pot of money for this and this pot of money for that and you're dealing with.
Yeah, it's a lot of money. This year.
Agencies, some of them match, some don't match, different matching requirements, you know, just.
Tough part really is when they began to try to, to make it better by suspending some dollars if you will. Where you think, cause you get used to the new number, so you budgeted with a new number. Now they put that back and now, oh yeah, by the way, you owe a thousand dollar more to go back to where you were before. It's like even in Indiana, they're talking about suspending, or Biden's even talking federal, suspending gas tax for a while during the bad economic time. So when you, when you go back to put it back, you're gonna think that was a, a price increase. Well, it really wasn't because you forgot about the fact that it was suspended before, you weren't paying it then, but now you're back to paying it again. So is there a motion to approve this?
I make a motion, we approve the budget request for the Thrive West Central in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents.
And I, uh, all, all fairs say aye? And opposed? Nope. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, I really appreciate it. I will be back, um, either in August or September, uh, with an update on our resiliency plan. That was what we did for the six county region here for, um, long-term economic recovery and resiliency coming out of the pandemic. We did a big study on that. We'll have printed documents that we hand out and give an updated report. And then in September, October, I'll be back again to start talking about our regional housing analysis. And, uh, we were, Thrive was awarded one point of million from ready grant funds to help incentivize builders, um, across the region to pay for infrastructure costs on, uh, new home or home renovations in with those kind of projects, so I'll talk about that as well, so.
He can go on like this all day, he and I have breakfast once in a while, we'll do stuff. It is dizzying to me, just dizzying, every program during the year at the same time that they're dealing with. I mean, it's just amazing. And he'll throw out these numbers, he's like fifty-three eleven versus fifty-three ten, whatever this is. This kind of makes me smile as we go. I appreciate you liking you, sir, you do a good job, thank you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it, thank you.
All right, um, anybody else have any other, uh, new business? I was thinking I did have something here, but let me see. No, Don's contract is what I have here, okay. And there is a grant available for, we'd have to have a two million dollar bridge project going on and it's a fifty percent match, but we could get a million dollars from the feds, I think, for a bridge project. But I just don't think we have any spending a million bucks on a bridge in the county at the time because we seem to be okay. Okay, uh, let's move on to old business, uh, this added REX insurance, was there something about that?
I guess continued from last meetings, what have we had on the last meeting?
They just need to send us the new contract, they had the typos in it that they were gonna fix, but I don't, I haven't seen anything, so I don't know.
Does Nick know he's waiting on that, did you make contact with him?
I have not told him that, but when he left here, he indicated that he's gonna send us one without typos.
I'll remind you of that.
That was a while ago, though.
So we need a new contract without typos?
Yeah, there's a couple in there, he'll, he should have those, if not, he can call me.
Yeah, I was gonna say, did you give him what the typos were, did he have a copy of what they were?
I've looked at the email, I, I thought he said that when he initially presented that he's gonna send us a finalized version.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll check with him, Nick, Nick here is his name and I'll check with him.
Yeah.
Contract to Nick, okay.
Before you go farther, I don't know.
I'll give you a break.
What did you have?
Uh, I'm sorry, I should have gotten this in on the agenda. I'm out at the sanatorium, uh, we're having the ATV race in two weeks and we'd like to cross our, from our property on the north side of the road to our property on the south side of the road, across Old Thirty-Six. Like we last, did last year.
Yeah, we talked last year, I thought that was gonna be the last year on that last year. We did get complaints, of course, from neighbors when we do that, but I, we never had a problem closing it before, as long as I am, it's gonna still get through.
Yes.
The complaint I get always is that, uh.
Chris, he too, he can't get our horses down the road.
Well, that, yeah, that actually, actually, I've never had him like Chris, I don't have, I've never had that. It's farther up the road, he's a, he's got two accesses for ambulance service to his place now. He can only have one access for ambulance service to his way, so for that, it's just one day or two days?
Just two days, Saturday and Sunday.
And what times?
Uh, about ten to about four. And it won't be continuous.
And, um, one time, we had you out by the road, five hundred? Uh, had, had traffic stopped at five hundred, goes into Old Thirty-Six?
We are, we are, yes, we are, we're gonna be dealing with the sheriff department's again to help with the traffic control.
Okay, that was a complaint he had, he got stopped, he was complaining about the fact that, uh, that Old Thirty-Six was closed, so, so, um.
We're not gonna, basically the reason why we put someone up there last year was people would, uh, who were coming to the race would bring their big trailers down the road and they would get to the closure, then they'd have to try to back up the road and they were backing into people's driveways.
Right.
And so we tried to do positive traffic control at the top.
Right.
My volunteers, my volunteers didn't know the magic words. Anybody who says they live there, they can obviously.
Gotcha.
And they're always stopping visitors from going down the road.
Gotcha.
That was the reason, but.
Do you take care of that this year, you think it will be a problem then? That's really the only complaint I had on that, yup. You guys got any concerns or questions on it?
I expect about three thousand visitors.
Great.
What's that date?
Uh, fifteenth and sixteenth of July, or the Friday, July fifteenth and sixteenth, I think, this is the.
We just need a motion to approve closure of the road, the sheriff's department's gonna handle the details on that, Justin, is that right?
Yeah, he said he's gonna try to get a couple more guys to fire him.
You comfortable with it, won't create any?
Yeah, we really didn't have any issues last year.
Okay. Great.
Outside of the main property, so.
Okay, yeah, that was the only complaint.
Yeah, basically, we, we stopped people last year at the gate, this hour, we're gonna let them all the way up into the.
Great.
So we're gonna have a ha, a mile of backup instead of two hundred yards of backup before we would overflow, but.
Okay.
We're also running the shuttle, the hay wagon, the Billy Creek hay wagons to move people back and forth a lot easier.
Great.
And I, I don't know if I need to talk to you about this, but we're working with, uh, NISA to do the hay wagons from Billy Creek to downtown during the cover bridge festival. So I don't know if I need to come back for that or.
Uh, probably, and it might be a town issue too. The way we used to do that, uh, had a shuttle and the shuttle came up from Billy Creek up on the, what, what road is that?
High Street.
Okay. And they would, um, let them off at the old jail and they would, they would get on at the old jail, they'd ride back to Billy Creek. So if you're gonna have that, you probably need to talk to the town about that, I suppose, that's, is that right, Justin?
Went out on the highway.
We didn't, when we did, we came right there, right up High Street.
I used to ride it once in a while.
Okay, so the one year they went out that hard and more than one time.
Just like a big circle is what it was, but.
I would be tough, it's going twenty mile an hour, I suppose, there?
I think, I think, I think NISA wants us to turn right there in front of Thirty-Six loom and then, uh, turn right back on the High Street, one block.
One block, yeah, that's what it gets, okay.
That gets this, that loop there, so we're not trying to do a three-point turn on the hay wagon.
Okay. You okay? Okay. Yeah, come back when you process that stuff with plan, we'll, we'll prove that thing.
We're working with PCI closely on a lot of things and so we're trying to get PCI to just go ahead and, they pretty much book anything they want into Billy Creek anytime, so.
You're Greg, right?
I'm Greg.
This is Greg Larson, Greg Larson is the gentleman that purchased, his conglomerate group, whatever they have, purchased, uh, Leon Bryant are bringing that back to life and they've, uh, they've purchased the old barns, uh, south of Thirty-Six there with the dual silos in front. And they are, uh, I, I'm guessing you're still in a leasing agreement with, uh, Billy Creek Village?
We obviously can't own Billy Creek because it's owned by Billy Creek Village Inc., which is a five C three.
Yes.
But we have gone into a very long-term lease to be the manager of Billy Creek and we, we basically lease it for an indefinite period of time. And we're putting, we got a ready grant, we're working on that. We're putting in, we've got a new handicapped shower house, we've got a six stall shower house going in there right now. And we expect next year to be open all year.
Great, looking forward to that, appreciate that coming back to life, I was on the board out there for a long time, that was, that was a long time ago. Good to see it back to life. Okay, um, we just need to approve the ATV closures.
We'll make a motion that we allow them to close the road for the ATV races on July fifteenth and sixteenth, is that right?
Five and six, right, yeah.
Okay, moving second to approve closure of Old Thirty-Six only, uh, on July fifteenth and sixteenth for the ATV races out at Leon Bryant facility, all fairs say aye? Is there some of the names you'd be calling that instead of the Leon Bryant facility?
We call it Indiana State Sanatorium now, we went back to the original name, it's good to know the sign. We call it Indiana State Senatorium now, we went back to the original name, it's good enough that the sign up front is, and so.
So let's, if he would add that to the minutes, that's now the Indiana State Senatorium as opposed to Leon Bryant property. So we know who we're talking about. Okay, that's all you got?
That's all I got.
Okay, anybody else, did you have something for us? Okay, anybody got anything else? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
We got the park middle.
Oh, yeah.
Randy's here.
I don't know, I don't need.
Yeah.
Justin Terry.
Oh, Randy, I thought Jason was saying Brandy, I thought, who's Brandy? Brandy, oh.
It's on here, but there's no.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
I didn't know Justin.
No, I real, no, not real, real quick, we had a, we thought it was a water line leak in front of the jail last week. And had U-MAC come out, town said it was leaking five or six gallons a minute, dug it up, our plans didn't show anything being out there, the cars, but the sewer runs there, the main water line runs through the spot. Ended up being a farmer's field type.
Oh, really?
Coming from across the road under us, and then there's a drain in our driveway, they didn't help that, but apparently a tree that grew up, the roots got into it. So finally just ruptured and flooded our front yard, but.
So they fixed it?
Yeah, so.
But it was, it wasn't our water line or?
No, but from what I'm being told, Nick probably can confirm that, since it was our fault, the, the tree roots got into it, it's our problem now, but pay for the repairs.
I can't imagine that being our fault, but we didn't even know it was there.
Have we talked, is our insurance aware that happened?
No.
Uh, we probably need to make them aware.
We haven't got the bill yet, so I don't even know what the cost is, but.
I would think we'd have to see where they had permission to even put that on our property.
Yeah, that's why I was curious.
Pretty much, that's God, it's not like.
Roots are looked at differently sometimes than falling trees, but the permission part would be where I would be.
If they didn't have permission to put it there, we would have no reason not to plant a tree there, or have a tree there.
My guess is that probably dates back.
I don't remember anybody ever doing it, so I don't know.
Could've been there forever.
Yeah, so.
I don't even know how long we've owned that property, so.
It's gonna be a historical question.
That's why we got lawyers, I like it.
Why we keep minutes for these meetings too, so.
All right, okay.
So I'll definitely notify the insurance.
Yeah, I'd be reluctant to pay that till we get that settled, I don't know why we wouldn't, if they didn't, so, so it's, it's choice of us paying for it or town paying for it, or the farmer paid for it?
No.
Farmer.
Farmer paid for it, okay, interesting, yeah. Thanks, Nick, like having, give me a job to do, so appreciate it, yeah.
Hey, I just passed along to insurance.
Okay, well, that's true, yeah.
But it definitely is a question as to whether they had permission, though.
Yes, yeah, we don't need to know from the land, they could have some other farmer patient, permission, put it out there, and then we bought it off that farmer and put it there, and so.
But if it was an easy, it should be illegal easy, it's required.
Yeah.
Interesting, so what you got today?
Well, our water, we got our bids for the paving for the community crossing grant. They did come in higher.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Thanks for watching, you're doing, appreciate it.
No, I say, thank you so much, Park County's been amazing, city pot.
She, yeah, she is, she's.
Absolutely amazing.
Yep.
Of course, our match is two thirty-nine, three twenty-four oh eight, plus it went up two hundred thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. So that makes a total of three thirty-nine, or four thirty-nine, six ninety-eight, fifty-eight.
Okay.
I talked to Roy this, this afternoon, early afternoon, we came up with a plan, get, how to get the money, so.
Great.
Need your approval for the accepting the bids.
Okay.
Receiving.
Okay, why don't you pass those up around this way, and let Bruce look at it and see if he's good to go, and, or Dan, and get that done.
Three copies, we wouldn't sign all three yet.
How many, if we all have to, yeah, we all have to sign.
So this is for our community crossings grant work with, with Milestone.
For the one we just got, right?
Yes, uh-huh.
What'd you tell us the other day, that?
Hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy-three now is the average price per mile?
Hundred and seventy-three thousand per mile, last year the estimate was eighty thousand, it was all over a hundred, so it's. Was that doing two lanes, that's more, more than double for a amount of blacktop. And the asphalt, see, man, went from four hundred dollars to five up to a little over eight hundred dollars a ton.
I don't know how we stay in business doing that, I don't know how we do that.
Well, and it, but I mean, again, it goes back to, again, for Pam, and then back there, Jessica, you know, we've talked about the fact that these community crossing grants, we get roughly ten miles, well, now. We're.
Five miles.
Five point seven miles is all we can get, I mean, millions of dollars now.
Is all we're gonna get out of these, and we can only get this grant once a year, up to a million, if you can get the million, and sometimes you can't even get the, the whole amount, and so. Just, again, the understanding is.
More hurdles.
Just as.
As we thought.
We talked about with increased prices on the sheriff's office for those things, increase of prices for Thrive, everything's gone up, and. So we just, people need to understand that what we used to be able to do, get ten miles out of our money, now we're gonna get five miles out of our money.
Yeah, we felt like we were starting to get a little bit.
Yeah, we thought we were getting, maybe caught up a little bit.
Now it's cut in half. Another email from today, they've extended the application period, starts July the first, or July the first of these, and then goes to August thirty-first. So it'll be two months down, seven months, they had to put a buffer in there.
Just in case they may have to raise prices, yeah.
I haven't signed anything yet, I didn't know.
Yeah, we, I need to make a motion to approve.
I don't, I have no problem, what we gotta do, we can't, it's what it is.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
So I'll just make a motion, and we approve the bid from Milestone Contractors for the community crossing grant money that we received.
And I'll second that.
All fairs say aye? All right, we all three signed, huh, we got three signed.
And we have been chipping semen, we got eleven hundred East shots, and we got seventy-four finished.
Great. When do you anticipate getting?
I need that one, I think.
Paper started.
Just got two. And you get that, check the field, is that?
Okay.
Two hundred and five, we got one on the road, and we got two foot payments down here on Nine Mill, or one hundred dollars, piece of knives there, and then we got Henry Road, then we'll be, they start paying.
Okay. There's no space for her to test these, they need to be tested by other?
I'm just writing in there.
Okay.
That's really all I have.
Okay.
You guys got something for me?
Be safe out there, Tom.
Yes. Chuck's been at Morrison ninety-eight to a hundred and five, different places. Down by Jeffries Ford, do you have any equipment in there at all right now, broom or anything? No, we're over on Crane though. Okay, before you take off, I had a couple complaints over the weekend, they spilled a pretty good jagged gravel on, coming off of Jeffries Ford on the Richton Road. I had some complaints, motorcycles, it's, it is, and it's inch and a half, two inches thick, if they could just sweep it off.
Okay.
That's the only thing I have.
Anybody else have any, anything, any concerns?
Nope, I'm stay cool.
There a motion to adjourn?
A motion we do.
Okay.
All fairs say aye?
Aye.